Yes.
Okay.
Next thing on the agenda is McCulloch Community Center. Lawrence has given us a last day here. Lawrence, if you want to... Any concerns?
The government day, the next one will be Monday, September 10th, and we need to try to get the word out more because there are more people in the community that are just finding out that we do that down there. So what we were thinking maybe using the electronic sign. I've seen it on 214 at Midway. Maybe about time for the government day maybe have that out there and let people know. And also more in a paper maybe because there's a lot of neighbors there who are just finding that out. And we're still, the parking lot, still need work done to it?
I talked with the week yesterday and they're supposed to go over there and work on that front there, remove that pipe that gravel down, move some of the dirt over. He said that they had scheduled to get on that.
Okay, great. And the outreach donated five computers and desks and we'll check them with Sunday to verify the cost of the Internet.
Nine.
Huh?
Nine.
Nine, well, we confused the five. And I talked to Diane last night and she, from Outreach up north, laying down, and she wants the old computers and any electrical TVs, anything that is at the center and no use, they recycle back up there. And Toyota manufacturing, West Virginia don't make the monitor to be used for presentation, moving, etc., which my wife Sharon Wood works for. That's all I have. Thank you.
Low reach doing good. We gave away this bag or about bags, what do you want? Last year we gave away 24. This year we gave away 95.
Would it be possible after the meeting that maybe have a little meeting with two of you also, make sure we get everything coordinated and all that? Just down in my office maybe after the meeting. So I won't be sidetracked for this for now.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is a helping initiative. Hopefully we will be starting a new program tomorrow. We have our employee cook on Appreciation Day tomorrow at noon. And hopefully we'll get some groups that will want to start walking.
Hey, we just want to keep that out there and encourage the people. I did have a contact this week. Finally, he said after all this, I don't want to give you a name, but he said after all this time, he said, "I waited near the end when we talked about having a celebration to finally say, 'Tell myself I've got to quit smoking.'" So he finally said, "I haven't, I've been off of two weeks," so we'll see how it works.
And I seen one of our good participants that had quit smoking, sent her out smoking elsewhere.
Oh, no.
That was so sad. But she assures me she is quitting, but she just needed that.
Every time I catch one of my diabetes in a candy bar, they tell me the same thing. That's my last one.
Anyway, if there's anyone here that hadn't got the message in their volunteer group, whether it be the Crime Watch or the different organizations we have, Parks and Rec and all this, we do have a luncheon tomorrow at 12, be across the street. We started here, not putting a tent up, but we'll be serving lunch there at 12 until we get, everybody gets taken care of. We've got basically a semi-healthy baked chicken rather than fried and salads, you know, veggie type things and fruits. And nothing but water to drink. I'm afraid people will be trying to sneak up the courthouse.
Okay, this was tabled over from the last meeting. A motion to approve a donation amount of $500 to the Lincoln County Fair and Festivals for fireworks for the Fall Festival.
Sunday. I see. Motion second, then all yes, motion carries. That's not what he asked for, but that's what I thought we should have put out.
Next thing under a new business. I need a motion to approve the bills that submitted for payment.
Sunday. I see. In motion second, then all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the appointments down in vacation, the Lincoln County Commission by Marleau Duke Court.
I'll say.
In motion second, then all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the appointments, wills, and settlements that submitted for approval by Marleau Duke Court.
Sunday. I see. Motion second, then all yes, motion carries.
Need a motion to approve the contract bond between the West Virginia Development Office and the Lincoln County Commission with the Lincoln County Department of the National 25,000 dollars for the Community Participation Grant Program and your Charles McCann President of the Organization, the Speaker of the State of Douglas.
Sunday. I see. In the second, then all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to accept the share settlement for the period of March of 7, 2012 through June of 30, 2012, as presented by David Baker, Sheriff.
I'll say. Motion second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to appoint Alan Seeholder to the Airborne Authority as a representative of the Lincoln County Commission.
Sunday. I see. Motion second, then all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to schedule the annual turkey shoot for September the 15th, 2012 at 9:00 a.m. at the Upper Metter River Shooting Ranch.
All in motion second. In the second, all yes, motion carries. For anybody that doesn't know, this is a vintage commission that's sponsored for a number of years and basically involves shotguns, 12, 16, 20, and pistol and deer rifle and sometimes the muzzleloader. So basically, it's a good turnout. The ROTC kids come up and actually run the cars, making sure that the, give them the targets and things in there. So it's just one of those things that we thought we'd try when we built the new shooting range. They want, wants to come, welcome to be there. We provide the ammo for the shotgun and pistol that do it.
Well, do you know, do y'all have any flyers about that?
We were going to ask some extra, but I got one on the board, book going down here, but...
That's only one we have so far. I haven't paid any copies yet. Could you make me a few copies and I'll put them out?
Yeah. So it's, we'll, yeah, we've got some somewhere. They haven't gotten to us.
I need a motion to approve a donation in the amount of $500 to each Lincoln County Crime Watch group.
Sunday. Motion second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve donation amount of $3,000 to the two food factories in Lincoln County.
This is what we always have done, so it's...
I'll say.
Motion second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to give the Lincoln County Democratic Executive Committee organization to use this small courtroom with the Lincoln County Courthouse on August 16, 2012 at 6:00 p.m. for a meeting.
Sunday. I see. Motion second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to appoint Leslie V. Cretshank as administrator to the estate of Emmett W. Valentine Senior, set bond of $1,000.
I need the motion.
I'll say.
Motion second, then all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to reappoint Sharon White to the Lincoln County Board of Health, term being July the 1st, 2012 through June the 3rd, 2017.
Sunday. I see. Motion second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the appointment of Brandon Johnson as supervisor of the NEG Storms DOL for the cleanup of Middle Fork Creek.
This is, we talked about probably back some time, part of the Workforce Investment Board, and they basically are providing us some, if people come out and work, we have to provide supervisors. But whatever we pay, then we can bill and we get reimbursed. They pay to clean up, we pay the supervisor. I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Motion second, all yes, motion carries.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is public comments. Anyone in the audience that wants to speak at this time?
Well, I want to thank the Commission today. I'm here on behalf of the United Mine Workers. I know you've probably heard of the bankruptcy filing by Patriot Coal. And we're here today to, excuse me, try to get the Commission to sign off on a letter of support for the employees. I've been to the Boone County Commission, they signed off on one, and the Democrat Executive Chair signed one. Tracy's got one that we're going to look at tonight to sign. And here's a copy of the letter they're trying to get signed. Here's some more copies.
We have Lisa Reine, who is the chairman for the Republican, where she may help just on the...
That'd be fine. The more people we can get to sign, the better off we are. It's going to be a long fight. They're going after the retirees' health care. They're going after the active people that's working. They're going after their health care plus benefits. They're going to try to get, you know, less money on the hour, take days away that people's accumulated over the year. I myself, I've worked there for 35 years. And this was a set up deal that was started five years ago with Arch Coal and Peabody Coal. Arch formed a company called Magnum, that father union debt on the Magnum. Peabody formed Patriot Coal. About a year and a half into it, they put those two companies together, which put all the liability on Patriot. There's 22,000 retirees, people that will be affected through this. There's over 102 companies not counting subsidiaries that will fall under this lawsuit. They went to New York City and formed two dummy companies so they could file in New York City. They have no business whatsoever other in New York City. All there is in West Virginia and Illinois. Their main office is in St. Louis and office is in Charleston. So we have filed a petition, tried to get it moved back to West Virginia. I think those will be heard maybe on the 23rd of this month. We're having a meeting in Charleston on the 30th and we're trying to get all the retirees out, any active people. I'm the officer of Local 2286 there at Hobet. We've got about 750 people in our local. About 350 of those are retirees now. I'm also the chairman of Boone-Lincoln Logan Combat Committee for the mine workers. And like I say, I come here today to try to get this signed off on. The Boone County Commission, they went ahead and took our letter and put it on their letter head and then signed off on the bottom of it. If I can just get this signed and what we're going to do, we've got people working, Mango, Logan also getting these signed. We've got other lists here, just getting individual people to sign off on. We're just trying to give them these signatures that they can take with them when we end up in court to show the support out in communities and how hard it's going to hit these communities. Because there's a lot of employees works down there, lives in Lincoln County.
You've got some retirees on there.
Yeah, we've got some retirees that's going to be affected in this also, sadly to say. Like I say, I'm a member, been there 35 years, and I was hoping to retire after the first year.
Now, on this, on this, do you want each individual commissioner to sign it or how do you want it?
Well, like I said, here's the way, y'all do it how you want to do it. There's a way Boone County did it. They put it on their letterhead and then the Commission signed it across the bottom.
I know this has had a, I have a lot of patients that work for Patriot, work for Patriot and things, and I just, I don't know that anybody, you guys do, because you work there and have to deal with it, but when I talk to the people, how unsettled they are about this, I mean, the whole future that they worked for, just all of a sudden they don't have it there in front of them. And it's not only bad economically for those families and hearts in those areas around there, because I see a lot of people moving to Logan County too, but it's also a tremendous stressor just to families.
Oh, it is.
You know, they're talking about moving out, they're talking about, you know, not waiting around to see what happens and things. I think it's, you know, it's a shame. You know, I see these people day in and day out that hurt themselves in mines that don't tell anybody about it because they don't want to lose their job. And then a few years before they're retiring, they can't do the job because they've been hurt so much and they have the effects of the black lung bothering them so much. And then, I don't know, there doesn't seem to be any compassion on the heart of the employer then, even though these people have been loyal employees and took lost fingers and broke backs and developed black lung or lung cancer. And when it comes down to these type things, they don't seem like they have any idea of what's wrong. What's wrong is not to, you know, kill you guys working in these mines and then just leaving you to, just say, "You make it from here on out." That's just not, that's just not right.
I myself, like I said, I've been there 35 years. I've had a disc taken lower back from work, had a rotator cuff surgery prepared. I go take spinal injections, trigger point injections, just so I can continue to work. And then when you get to the age where you're thinking you're going to get to enjoy life a little bit, then that's when you want to take it all away from you. I'll stand and tell you right now, this will be a hell of a fight. And mine workers is up to it. Well, I've been told by Cecil Roberts that if they had to spend every dime that the unions got to fight him, that's what the, so it's probably going to be a long drawn out fight if that's what it comes to. If we can't get it moved out of New York, then we're going to New York. Probably a lot of us may be in the, get to see us in jail somewhere through before this is over with, but if that's what happens, I'll spend my retirement years in jail.
At least they'll feed you.
That at least I don't get fed.
I have one patient, he's 57 years old, spent 37 years working in the mine. He's a roof boulder. He has both his rotator cuffs are torn on both sides. So this man's working up over his head in constant pain and continues to work because he doesn't want to not work. And these are the type people that we're seeing affected with this. These people that are so loyal and so hardworking, and then they wind up in the end, get no compensation for it. You know, I do black lung evaluations and occupational medicine evaluations, and I see what shake these guys' lungs are in. And then you can't pay them enough for what they did. You really can't. You can't pay them for how it makes a lot of money.
Let's maybe do two things. I would entertain a motion to provide support as requested in the letter and one item, and also then a note would be to have request that we put this on letterhead and have available signatures, just for on record at the commission that we support.
Yeah, I think we did, because we probably would have to have that as an agenda item to sign it. But I mean, I think we're all in support of what we're saying here. So, and I'll go ahead and make the motion like you're saying, that we are in support of you, then...
Our motion second, just to basically, a support of the United Mine Workers in this bankruptcy filing with Patriot Coal. And then we will prepare a letterhead for signatures and be available to be signed at the next meeting. Now, what could we send that?
I'll give you my address and get it to me. Do you know when the, when is your next meeting?
Not until September 6th.
That late?
Well, we're having a meeting August the 30th, and I was trying to get all this put together so I could present it to Cecil, who will be in town. And I mean, if, well...
Well, I mean, we could, I think, I mean, if the Commission's agreeable, in a emergency situation, we can meet or we can just add this to the agenda, I think, since it's a non-money spending, not an issue.
Yeah, we're just wanting to show that we have the support of Lincoln County and, you know, all the surrounding counties that our employees live in. That's all we're asking and...
So I guess our question, do we want to have a special meeting to address this or do we want to address it today?
Well, I think we can go ahead. I mean, I think it's, we're pretty, you know, the mayor's had a decision about it already and I don't think, if there, kind of promising, someone would see a procedural problem with this, we'll just go ahead and put the motion on the, on the next meeting and go ahead. But I think we can, I don't see a problem, just go ahead and sign the rest of the motion.
Yeah.
We've done things similar to this before when we're dealing with the timetable. We don't like to, we don't like to move on things that we don't have on the agenda, but we will if there's a timetable involved where it needs to be done.
Yeah, if there was any way I could have, I would have been here sooner, but, you know, this is all happening and it's, the faster they can shove it down our throats, you know, the better it is for them. And that's why we're trying to get, I guess, what you say, get our ducks in a row so we can...
You can tell G where you want them to, we'll get them.
All right, just Rick Ryan, 24, Bear Tracks Trail, T R A X, SOD, that's 25564. I truly appreciate it, thank you.
And you know, if something else comes up, as you move into it, feel free to come back and or let us know how we might help.
I appreciate that.
Is there anyone else?
It's me again.
I hurt first.
Sure, go right here.
She was named while going on.
No problem. I just had a couple of things, hopefully. I just wanted to let everybody know that Dairy Port Garden has done pretty good this year, and so they've been seeing a lot of produce come out of that. They're, they're having a hard time finding places for it to go, which shocks me. They've been giving some of it to the pantry out here in Hamlin, and they've asked around to different places to see if anybody would have, say, a church group or something like that that would want to come receive that free produce, the idea being that it would go to a church group that would distribute that to elderly individuals, non-ambulatory people who can't get out in the garden but would like the benefit of fresh produce items. So I thought maybe the best idea might be to put the word out and let people come to us with phone numbers or contact information. It just goes against everything, I think, to let stuff like that go to waste. And, and this year's been one of the best years that they've had, and they've got watermelon and green beans, and we've managed to keep the deer out of it, so. And they've done a really good job with it. They've really taken that on. Chad Chandler has really done a great job with, with doing that. And I don't believe they put any pesticides on any of it, so it's organic, so even better. But I just wanted to put that out, so if anybody has any contacts that they'd like to leave with me as far as coming after that.
Have you approached the school system? Since they not have one school that they like to experiment with?
Well, there's always the, the issue with the menus there and having the menus designed and all that. I mean, I'd love to see it go there. I'd love to see us supply all of the food to the school out of the county. Bigger project than probably what I can take on, but we could do that. I don't know if, you know, how, Diane Miller's not with the food service down there, so I'm not sure who, I guess I would contact her.
Yeah, she's...
But for the short term right now, I mean, they still have produce that's coming on in that garden and so, you know, even today, if I've got contact information that I could pass to them, they go down, they pick it, they bring it back out here to the Dairy Port Center building, and anybody that wants to come by there and pick that up, you know, we, we would just like for people to understand that we'd like it to go to elderly in church groups or any other kind of a group, you know, if you know anybody that has any other kind of group that could access people to hand that out, we'd certainly like to see that go and be given to people that can use it.
So you're talking about just basically some, any nonprofit group that's taking care of it?
Anybody who can get it to somebody who, who needs it, would like to have it and could benefit from it, well, we could all benefit from it. But, you know, generally it's people who would not be able otherwise to get their own locally grown fresh produce by growing it themselves, ideally elderly and people with small children who may not have the opportunity, their land space.
So then he check with you or check with Chad?
They can call me, they can call Chad, any, either one of us, Jerry Swanson, I mean, he could pass that information as well on to Chad. But, but for the most part, they're going to have to come to the Dairy Port Center to pick it up. That's where it's going to end up. And they pick that stuff several times a week. Well, probably not, but they'll have it in bags and have it ready to go to whoever would like to have it. So we really just encourage, I don't want it to go to waste.
What about like your senior citizens, like the place up next to Folsburg?
Yeah, LCOC, senior citizens, where they live in the hills.
Any phone numbers you have, any contact names you have of people that you think would be willing to come pick that up? If they got a phone call today and said, "Hey, we've got 40 pounds of green beans we just picked this morning, can you come after them?" Yes, we'll be there. Because they've picked over, you know, 500, 600 pounds of tomatoes, the green beans did very well. Last year they got eaten to the ground by the deer, but we fixed the fence. So they have a lot of green beans, watermelons, corn, potatoes, just all kinds of things that they've been successful in, in growing this year. And I just, I refuse to let that go to waste.
I'm glad you're trying to save it.
Right, there's no reason for that. And, you know, I do get calls from time to time from local people who grow gardens just because they've always grown gardens and they have extra that just sits on the vine and goes to waste. And so, you know, I always am trying to find places to send that. We shouldn't have any of that sitting out going to waste anywhere. Get that picked and get it out to people who can use it.
Even obese kids can use that?
Absolutely, obese children can use that. Talk about nutrient rich foods instead of calorie empty foods. I've been working with a boy, or a man, I should say, I say boy because he sounds so young on the phone, Brandon Enix. He went to school here in the county, I'm not sure exactly where, I'm thinking Griffithville area maybe, but he's a certified engineer now and he's, he's agreed to take on what we have in the 4H program called the STEM program, and that's an acronym for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. And it's very focused on those kinds of activities for 4H youth. You know, again, people have the idea that 4H is just for agriculture and going to the county fair and all that kind of thing, and that is still a part of what we do. But, you know, we also understand that there needs to be a focus on those kinds of activities with a lot of hands-on, learn by doing kind of things. And he's agreed to try and work on that program with me here in Lincoln. He's really excited about taking that on. So I, I think we would really benefit tremendously from a program like that. I lost some robots and equipment that I could have gotten my hands on, that we could have kept, had we had people that I could have gone to at the time to get them quickly on board and get us a robot team together. And it was programming that they use with the Mars Rover program, not this current one, but the one that just passed. It was software that came straight from NASA, straight from the programmers that used it up in the upper part of the state. So it would have been a good hands-on opportunity for kids that could have competed to make those robots work. So it really, I get very disappointed when opportunities like that pass, but, you know, I reach out and try to grab one, three will go by, but we'll keep grabbing after more of those. But I'd really like to see some people come out if they're interested in something like that to help us get kids involved. And I'd like to see us have a robotics team in the county if we could pull that together and especially with the, the critical skills education that would be involved in this kind of an activity. And it'd be fun. It would firstly be fun. Secondarily, there would be a lot of good educational opportunities there. You know, in the past, we've had issues with our meetings too, you know, the 4H meetings, it's just, everybody's so far apart, you know, it seems like 14 Mile Mountain is just so hard to get over. And, you know, the guy in Dock River just seems impossible to cross, you know, either way, and I mean either way, so. And, and we've come up with a, a program that we've been using called Go To Meeting, and I do have access to use that program. We have five contracts that the university's purchased, so I can call at any time to the IT and ask them for a selected time period with that. And we can get people on either side. If you can't make it to a meeting, if you've got to cook your dinner, if you've got a computer or a tablet or something with a camera on it that will accept that program, we can have you in our meetings and you can still cook your dinner or take care of your sick children or whatever, but still be a part of our meetings. And we really want to try and include as many people as we can, and that is certainly one way that, that we can do that. So if you think you can't attend a meeting, that's not a problem, I can fix that. And we can make sure that people get the chance to be involved in our 4H program. And, and any other programming for that matter that Extension Service has with David Roberts and his Families in Health program and Dying with Diabetes, you know, we both have access to those Go To Meeting applications and they work very well. It's actually the high-end digital version of that Go To Meeting program. So it'll be just like we're all in the same room together, but less travel time, so, and that's, that's always important. And having said that, the Leaders, 4H Leaders Association will be having a meeting on October the 8th in person at the Extension Office out here across from 711 at 6 o'clock. Now, the benefit of showing up in person is they generally will get food to eat for dinner. So if it looks like you're on camera and you have something... dinner, so if it looks like you're on camera and you have something better, we may come to your house, but certainly, you know, anybody who would want to participate in that meeting in person can come there, if not, and you'd still like to participate, but something else, you know, you've got to be somewhere else in the county for whatever reason shortly before that, by all means, let me know about a half an hour ahead of time, and I can send you an email with a link, you click the link, and it does for you what you need it to do.